That's what the guy wants to do. Anyway, he did. He sent it to me. He thought you were going out, so he just sent it to me.
Good morning. Welcome to our September 3rd Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you for taking time out of your day to come. There's something, being there's very few people in here, I've wanted to say this every since I've been in this position as president. Good morning, Vietnam. No, I love that movie. Anyhow, let's get started. I want to call this meeting to order and ask Craig Slay if he'll pray for us.
I think we do need prayer.
Yeah, I'm gonna know what you did this weekend.
I got the feeling better.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for, again, the privilege that it is to stand before you, to come before you, to join our hearts together, Lord, and to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to serve our fellow man, gather together and conduct this county. Father, thank you for our county, for all the many ways that you have blessed us abundantly. Father, we don't want to take it for granted. While we think about those folks' suffering right now in Bahamas, I pray specifically for, Father, for them, that they feel the power and the presence of your hand, the peace, the past understanding. Father, when they look out and they see devastation and destruction, I pray that you give them hope and to know that their future is secure. Father, I pray that as we conduct this today, that we would do so in a way that's pleasing to you, by the same force with your will. I pray this in Christ's name.
Amen. All right, let's go to public comment. And Brandon, before you get up, we've got a lady here that will take just a few minutes. She's very important, and we want to hear a little bit from Sharon Gill. She's our DHS director locally here. You don't mind, do you, sir?
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Gaines, we have something in common, because I love that movie too. But my name is Sharon Gill, and I am the county director for Rankin County DHS on 603 Marquette Road. It's an honor to be here today. I've been in the county as far as working ever since June 1st. But I am a resident. I've been here for 16 years. I'm a proud person. I came to Rankin County through Pontewood School. I worked there for 23 years. And working there, I was in the class of 2005 Rankin Leadership Class. And that's how I got an opportunity to learn a lot about Rankin County, and I decided to become a resident here. But we serve over 4,000 residents of Rankin County over at DHS. And just wanted to touch bases with you all and let you know that we're here to serve you all and also serve the community here as the best that we can. There are a lot of things that we want to do, and we want to work with Rankin County and the Board of Supervisors and whomever else would like to work with us in a positive kind of way, to make Rankin County even better than what it is now. I'm available, Ms. Janet, she has all my information, my phone number, my email, and all those good things. So if you need to contact me, I'm Sharon Gill at 603 Marquette Road, the county director with DHS. Thank you all so much for the opportunity this morning.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, Brandon, you're next. Three minutes.
I usually don't take that long.
Oh, no.
Although, I have to say, something about these microphones just makes you want to say that, don't it? Everything's going real good. We've had a real good summer as far as mosquitoes are concerned. This last month, August, we saw a little bit of rise here, a little bit of drop there. Just running on normal track. Been a slight bit lower than the previous years, which is a good thing. But everything is going right on course leading into September and October and getting ready to... We're on the downhill slope for the mosquito season this year. And so everything's going real well. We haven't had any positive disease pulls in the traps. We haven't had anybody diagnosed with West Nile or anything like that so far this year. Let's pray that it keeps going on that way. We're doing our job. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're good. Thank you.
Y'all know how to get in touch with me. Y'all have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, motion to approve the minutes of 13th and 15th.
All right, Bob makes motion to approve the old minutes.
Second.
Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve dissent.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion to approve consent agenda. Daniel seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Craig Slay.
Mr. President, this is our annual time to conduct a public hearing on our proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. This time, I'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask for anyone who wishes to speak to the Board of Supervisors concerning the proposed fiscal 2020 budget to please come forward at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak to the Board of Supervisors.
Daniel?
Would you like me to? I'd be glad to talk about it.
No, that's all right.
You sure? I got a few things to say, Bob. I'm glad you brought it up.
Did nobody get to dress like Mike Ward day-to-day?
How come you don't fill up that shirt like he does back here?
Really? Ain't anything to something. The long time's coming, too.
If y'all pass the budget, maybe everybody else will be able to get a shirt this time.
I don't think I got it.
Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on the matter of the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. At this time, we will close that public hearing. Later in the docket, you'll have an opportunity to vote on your budget.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Fortenberry? Come on down.
Thank you, ma'am. I actually stopped by Friday afternoon and took a look, and there was actually people in there. And they were standing in there.
This is about our Flowood office, and to let everybody know, our Flowood office is just a long, straight shot with only room for the public to stand up against the wall in one line. The jewelry store next door to us closed, and we had the opportunity to take in part of their square footage. This is two beds that he worked up to give you. I don't know if you've seen them or not. I understand that three of our supervisors went out there to look and decided to change our proposed...
We didn't change it.
You submitted a change to him, and this is just showing you the difference.
Well, part of the problem is that they talked about moving that counter, and the odds of being able to reuse it would be real, real, real iffy. That's when... So that was one reason. I think we looked at some other ideas, too.
But we lose all the benefit of getting that extra space for the public, because you're still way up close to the door when you do it that way. And it kind of defeats the purpose of adding area.
Well, where he showed us that day, the only thing that we really suggested was not to take out, one, not to move the existing counter and then just build a new counter to go where you were going to build it anyway, but not to take out the whole wall, only take out part of the wall, so it shut down the cost. But what are you planning on doing with... You're intending to move the existing counter to go horizontal or parallel with the...
Move it back, so the public can... So we can have a wraparound like we do here when it gets really, really busy.
You're still going to have to have, like where the existing counter is, you're still going to have some kind of partition there, aren't you?
I don't understand what you mean.
Well, this is... This counter goes all the way across the front.
Yeah.
Where you wouldn't have...
It'd be...
The public wouldn't be back there.
Right.
They would come in the left door, and just like our office here, they could have a wraparound and get to the front.
So you plan on just going from one wall to the other wall and not having anything go this way? Okay. So they're just going to stand it out?
And that's way back from where... Because right here is where your other counter was.
I got you.
So you lose all that space. And you'll see there, the difference is only like $2,000. It may be a bit more if they have to redo that counter, but this will last you for at least 10 years, maybe more. And I'm thinking since we did our land sale last week, and I'm here to report, that I am giving you 407,000 in overbids. That's gravy. That's extra.
How much was that?
407,000.
Man.
I think we can put four into that office and they get noticed.
So can I clarify one thing for the record? What you're looking at, I don't believe, would constitute bids in the nature of the way that we, this board typically, would receive bids for work. I think what you're looking at are proposals by the landlord who owns this facility to upgrade this facility and to include that upgrade, the cost of it, possibly as a part of the rent factor that the county pays. So we're not receiving bids from contractors who are wanting to do work for the county? And I wanted to clarify that for the record.
You'd be just amortized in the rent.
The difference is, if you did that the three-year period, it's only $400 more on the lease.
Well, can we not just pay it upfront? Can we be done with it?
We can work something out with the landlord. The only reason I mentioned anything about this, Jay, is just to make it so that there wouldn't be confusion among folks out in the public as to what y'all were looking at or considering. There's been no discussion, formalized discussion, yet between myself and the landlord about how we would work this out.
Okay.
And y'all will have the ability to decide how you want it to play out. Right now, you've got to decide what you're going to do. Okay? So, but for everybody's purposes, this is... These are not bids from contractors. This is a proposal from a landlord about property that the county already leases. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Are we tearing out that whole firewall?
No. His proposal was a portion of it, but enough that they didn't have to do that support thing.
That was what, I think, in the beginning, that whole wall, we understood the whole wall was coming out. Couldn't see why that would have to happen.
Yeah.
And I think that's the way, honestly, well, that's what he said to start with. That's when we looked at this other option, because there's no need in tearing out the whole. That was very costly.
Right. They were going to leave enough that it would have that support.
It'd have...
And have a...
Case opening.
Yes.
Yeah.
Craig, you need to get it with the man, so we can get you to move it forward before she leaves office.
Amen.
Which one are we going with? I found hers.
Me, too.
Because the day we were there, he didn't say you were going all the way across. So, I mean, just...
Well, it was also... It was also, if we were going all the way across, we were going to have to take that wall out all the way to the back, and it's a support wall. And that would have been pretty expensive. A lot of the ceiling would have had to come down and other things. But if we don't have to take, but 12, 15 feet...
Is he changing that electrical chase?
It's... Well, it's got electrical on here.
Yeah.
But I'm saying that... Second page.
That column is a... It looks like a column. That's a chase case opening, the case where the electric...
Did you give Craig one of them?
I did.
She did. We'll try to set something up with the landlord as soon as we can.
The sooner the better, because we're on the downhill slide here. I want to get it done.
Better hurry, if you're going to get your picture in it.
Might need those votes there.
Do I assume correctly that y'all would like to take whatever action you're going to take on September?
Yes, I think so.
So our next meeting is September, yes, ma'am. I need you to... Give it to me, and make it involved. Something.
Mr. Sullivan.
Keep your seat, Mr. Sullivan. Motion to approve.
Okay.
All right.
Good to see you, though, John. I didn't have to say recapitulation.
It is his birthday today, so...
Oh, really? Happy birthday, man.
Yes, it is. It's 50.
Made it six.
All right, hold on, Mike. You stay close. John had this item on here, order approving the 2019 recapitulation of real and personal assessments. Bob made the motion to approve it.
Second.
Jared seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Mike.
Motion to approve August and propose September.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Bob to approve August and September's road management scheduled work. And Jay seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Authorize an amount of 25,000 to Renee Chan for depositing in Wright County Hall Bond Ordinance Inspection of Cypress Creek Road. It was good, so she'll get her money back.
Motion to approve.
Roger.
We have a motion by Jay, second by Bob. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank y'all. Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item that I have on the agenda is Clark Creek Farms. We recommend approval of the final plat and a letter of credit in the amount of 173,771.05. And our recommendation is based on us receiving that letter of credit, which we don't have anything now.
All right. I've talked to him, and we're going to make it contingent, and it's in a day or two. I mean, but anyway, it's contingent to that being filed with you, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roger.
I've made the motion. Jay second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The second item is North Shore Parkway Spillway Road Improvement Project, STP 0061 0090. We recommend approval of pay application number two to Hemp Hill Construction Company in the amount of 63,035.90, an authority to issue that check.
So moved.
Roger.
All right, Daniel makes a motion. Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Third and last item I have on the agenda is Andrew Chapel Road Bridge Replacement Project. We recommend approval of pay request number five to Joe McGee Construction Company in the amount of 18,287.50, an authority to issue that check.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I made a motion. Jay second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Hey, Mr. Parker?
Yes?
On this one, where are we as far as putting together a solicitation or whatever for our bid to begin construction? Or are we... I know we talked about doing some clearing and grubbing ourselves.
Yes, sir.
Authorization to let including...
She won't read the D. I'm fixing to text Harris and get his attention.
Yeah.
All right. Be looking forward to it next week.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
All right, Craig? Again?
As far as I say, we combine A and B together.
Finally.
A and B will be a motion to set a public hearing for the 16th of September at 9:00 for those two items.
Second.
I have a motion by Bob, a second by Daniel, to put A and B together and set these in motion, so all... Well, any other discussion?
I have something on that.
Yes, sir.
Hey, when y'all met the other day, Tim, on that Shambie, whatever, you know, on the road or whatever, getting into it? Would it not be... It's not a little premature to go and start that till this is... See where this is going to pass?
Well, I think that's how we left that meeting, was they're not going to do anything. They're not going to spit anyone on anything until after this.
I hope not. I've been getting some feedback.
Yes, that's correct. We also got... I'll let the other folks that were there. I got the distinct impression that there were some second thoughts on the part of the family as to whether or not this was a good idea.
Yeah. I think that's something they need to think of, think about.
There was mention of a possibility that they may even be heading to another state. Just throw that out there. I don't know if that's going to happen or possibly could or whatever, but I don't know that we've gotten to the end of the line.
I just want to make sure they weren't moving toward utilizing that easement they had.
We made it clear with them that they probably didn't need to spend any money until after this been authorized.
I just wanted to check that.
Yep. Item C is to set a public hearing for October 7th at 9:00 on the Grantham Conditional Use Permit.
We didn't vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve.
Yeah.
We had a discussion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Next item C is to set the public hearing for October 7th on the Grantham Conditional Use Permit.
Second.
All right, Bob makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item D is literally paperwork, is to authorize the board present to initiate a request for activation of the Florence Byron Parkway for purposes of the LBA program.
Make motion approve.
Second.
I'm going to give it to Bob down there. He's not going to get too many more after... Jared makes a motion. Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item E is consideration of potential action to approve a MOU between Rankin County Youth Court and Revive Counseling. This is for funding counseling services through the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Drug Court Enhancement Grant. As long as the grant has funding, this MOU would be operational. The minute they lose grant funding, the MOU disappears.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Bob makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, I'll have one item under additional business to add at the board's pleasure, and also, we have a potential litigation item to discuss in executive session.
Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Wanda?
Good morning. Item A, approval to adopt the fiscal year 20 budget in the amount of 153,530,630.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Jay, to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, authority to publish the fiscal year 20 combined budget for publication.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion. Jared seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, authority to adopt the fiscal year 20 tax levy of 40.24 mils for the county taxes, which represent zero mil increase over fiscal year 19, and 58.55 mils for the Rankin County School District, which represents a two-mil increase in authority to publish.
Motion to approve.
Bob makes a motion. Bob makes a motion, I second the motion. Any other discussion?
For the record, it's not us.
That's correct.
Right. I was...
Jay, did you say that's not us?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure. All right.
The 58.55 mils for the Rankin County School District is what Jay's referring to when he says that's not us.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, new Rankin County misdemeanor facility, approval of pay application number 119 to Flagstar Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of 170,428.05, an authority to issue the check. Flagstar has requested seven additional days due to weather delays. The architect is recommending the additional seven days for this period.
Why do they need extra time? Anybody know?
Motion to approve.
Roger.
Was that you, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. Jay makes a motion to approve. Bob seconds. Any other discussion?
I think he's still ahead of time, Bob, compared to our other location.
I was curious. They should be through. I mean, that's my whole point.
It was for exterior.
Yeah, we got our certificate of occupancy last Friday. And so we expect there to be a ribbon-cutting celebration pretty soon.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, authority to enter into an agreement for third-party administrative services for inmate healthcare, Sirius America Insurance Company on behalf of the Rankin County Sheriff's Department, 3-Mallet Administrators Incorporated, and authority for the sheriff to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Sir.
All right. Daniel makes a motion. Bob seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
And item F, authority to publish notification requirements of MCA Section 2739 2037 and Section 2733 41F required during a reappraisal year in order to receive Homestead reimbursement fines.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Bob makes a motion to approve. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Hey, I have a question, not straight to L, but to John. John, we pretty much do this every year, don't we? Now, it's not that deal where it would roll up and you'd... Right, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. All right, Mike Ward, are you through, Ms. Wanda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mike, you got 30 seconds.
All right, I can do it in 30 seconds. Item one on here is just the authority for the board to accept the EOPG grant for 103,882.22, and just asking for the authority for me to sign that document and get it executed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second item I got lastly is, back on May 15th of this year, the board approved Uh, the second item I got lastly is, uh, back on May the fifteenth of this year, uh, the board approved a increase on our nine-one-one system to go to text to nine-one-one. And, uh, what we need is to get that, that document, uh, signed, so I can submit that up.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Jay, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's the fastest he's ever been up there.
It's cause somebody had a bet, he couldn't do it, two minutes.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Marcus.
Uh, under additional business, uh, we've got discussion and potential action and authorization to add AT&amp;T pinpoint nine-one-one services to our voice circuits on the Avia phone system. Uh, not to exceed one-time cost of thirty-five hundred dollars and not to exceed one hundred and fifty dollars per month, monthly, on our voice circuits. What this is, is for years, apparently ever since the county has implemented the Avia phone system, if someone on our phone system dials nine-one-one, it presents the nine-one-one answer operator with the address of the IT office. So if someone in the fluid tax collector's office picks up their phone and dials nine-one-one, it's going to Brandon Police Department and is telling them that that person is calling from the IT, from the IT office in the basement of the courthouse. Uh, it's a very important issue to correct, and it's never been set up properly, and this is an action to try and get that corrected. That also.
Is this a via or an AT&amp;T?
Uh, well, so there's multiple things at play here. The Avia phone system is not set up, was never set up correctly until now, um, and it's going to be set up correctly once AT&amp;T makes changes on their side. We also need the ability for AT&amp;T to make the changes on their side as part of this, to actually be able to, for us to present the correct address information out. Right now, all of our phone numbers show under one address, that's two twenty, November.
The thirty-five hundred.
AT&amp;T. Right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Bob, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Hey, thank you for your hard work, Marcus, on that, uh, election stuff.
Marcus.
Yes, sir.
While you're there, I want everybody to know, during the runoff, I was going to different precincts, actually taking doughnuts to the ladies. And there would be not a malfunction, maybe a human error there, but just something small. And I called Marcus. He was here, and this is about as far from here as you can get in this county. He got there, and I was at another one, and the next one, I think maybe their monitor, or their handicap monitor or something was not, and they had not called him. And when I'm leaving there, he's there. I went to another one later, and it was same kind of little, little bitty tweaking things. Marcus followed me around the county, and I thank you, and those people really liked the quick response, those poll people, and, and I, that's what we, uh, they respect you and they respect our office for that. Thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. I'm, I'm glad we were able to get everything solved. It really went pretty smoothly.
Quickly, yeah.
All right, thank you, guys.
Sir.
I was, they, for, for the record, every precinct tried to feed me, so.
Motion to discuss the need for executive session. No, you don't, no, you don't.
Oh. Under additional business, um, discussion of bond reimbursement. I put a sheet up there for all of y'all, much larger than it was the other day. It's two pages now.
Thank you.
We, you're welcome. We did get an answer back from Sue at Fairbank, and she said that the only thing that could not be on there was the reimbursement for, um, Wagner or the drainage that was just strictly drainage. I took both of those off, so everything on this sheet is eligible for reimbursement if you choose.
I see, okay.
If we take reimbursement for projects that are currently not listed on the bond, it means we're taking away from somewhere else.
Possibly, yes, sir.
Possibly, well, how is there?
Well, and if it's owned here, and it's a project that's included in our bond, Andrew Jackson, I'm sorry, Andrew Chapel, for instance.
Yeah.
That, that's not gonna impact you, because you've already captured.
Hollybush, spillway.
Yep.
The barn.
Spillway is on there.
Spillway's on here.
Spillway's on there.
Well, there's two spillways you're talking about. Yeah, spillway shouldn't be on the bond, I don't think. Depends on which spillway you're talking about.
I guess I'm thinking about any of your, Causeway.
Yeah, this is different. This spillway here, I think, is just a paving from Grants Ferry Road. Tim, am I right? Grants Ferry to four seventy-one, this is a separate, uh, deal that they got to see.
Oak Grove.
That, that's why, whatever y'all want to do on this.
Yeah, y'all just need to tell us what you want.
You can take these.
Eligibility.
Right, this is just what's eligible. If you don't wanna do all these, that's fine.
I guess.
Okay, so if you did all these, oh, if you did, then that means that's just that much money you're taking away from.
Potentially, we don't know that, I mean, I suggest maybe, is this something we can wait like a year from now, or you gotta do it now?
No, you can't. You have to do it now. You're only eligible to do it after you receive the bond money going back so far. You get a one-time shot at it.
Oh, wow.
Cause you go past that deadline, you can't do it.
A lot of that stuff is probably overestimated, the cost of those funds, you know, so. Somebody agree with that, no?
I don't know, I don't, but I mean, what I was getting at, though, if we did this, then that would just take away from the bond proceeds.
Potentially, and there are some items, there are some items that were included in the bond detail that are still in the process of being determined as to whether or not they're eligible. Okay, so there's some, some potential fat there. We get, if we get an answer back that says, no, you cannot spend the bond proceeds on that, then there will be a significant chunk that would otherwise have to be redirected somewhere. And what we're suggesting to you is, here is, here are items that we know qualify, that can be covered by that amount that's sitting over there in a holding pattern right now. In other words, if, if, if we get an answer that says no, and y'all have adopted roughly two million dollars in reimbursement here, those things will cancel each other out. You will not have lost anything on any of your bond projects.
So it's today our drop dead date?
No, it's not, because we have not received the bond funds, but shortly thereafter.
Tomorrow, when?
Okay.
When, when's?
We, we will get the money probably tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah.
Possibly, possibly Thursday morning. We're not, I started to leave.
So the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, would be, say, probably.
I mean, you've got some in here that you know you probably will leave in here, I mean, like.
We, we've got five hundred thousand budgeted in the bond deal.
How much?
Five hundred thousand, right? That what we put in the allied item for the bond?
Yes.
Five hundred thousand?
I believe so.
So we know at least we can take five hundred that's been allocated towards reimbursement.
You're looking at one point five million dollars that we're about to take out that's not accounted to our project.
I've got more.
Where are you coming up with that?
Well, just taking, looking into these ones that aren't on the bond.
Okay. So you are adding them up, okay.
So, if you do that, you gotta know where you're getting from.
Yeah.
I mean, there's six hundred thousand for Hollybush, that's almost three for spillway, that's three hundred for the barn, then Oak Grove was six hundred.
I think that, I think that, I think that spillway is on the bond.
Okay, so that's what I did.
That, that's the spillway, that's the spillway, that's not the North Shore project.
Well, you see what I'm saying, though?
It's on the bond.
I think the North Shore, it's the North Shore.
You get, you have two of the projects up there, you have the MPO money falling up there.
This, this one here is.
Which one's in the middle? The other one?
The other one.
I said let's wait till the sixteenth.
This one is on the bond, cause that's more than a half.
Hopefully, uh, maybe, maybe not.
That's the match.
Can we do that, Laura?
Twenty percent match or something.
Okay, that's, that way, maybe everybody can take the time to study this.
I don't think two weeks is gonna kill us.
Thank you very much.
All right, Wanda, you said you had something for additional business.
I think Craig has one item.
Yeah, I had one other item.
I bet, too, like, Mike, ju- just as a reminder, we had the folks that are affiliated with this twenty-twenty census.
Yep.
Come before you guys on a couple of occasions, we've, your staff has done everything that he knows to do. To get y'all punched up on a complete count committee, what that looks like. We're being pestered to no end to provide names of residents of the county who can, who can help get the word out about the census. It's volunteer, no pay, we don't expect it to be a terrible amount of time drain for these folks.
Well, you find somebody in my district willing to do that, we'll take them on.
Understood. So, wh- where I'm gonna leave it today with your permission, Ms. President, is, um, I'm gonna, I'm making one more request. Please try to find me some names. I have one name, okay? I have one name.
I got two.
Have you?
I mean, and I, and if he needs an extra, I can.
I'll take, tell me you got.
All right.
What, what do you, what's required of them?
They're gonna, they're gonna be meeting with census people and receiving instructions and logistics and orientation on how to get the word out to the various constituencies about participating in the census.
I've tried explaining, I don't know how to say, how much time it's gonna take, exactly what they're gonna.
I suggest, let's give a telephone number and a name to Craig, he's got nothing else to do, and he can just make the phone calls for us and recruit.
No!
So how it's gonna, how, how we need to leave it is, uh, I've got a report back, and I've got to have a meeting with the census folks. To let them know where we stand, because.
So what is the downside if we don't do this? Cause last time, we didn't, we didn't do this.
I don't know that there's a downsized, downside to it, Jay. I think the way it's gonna end up is, the committee will be formed, and you won't have any say in what that committee looks like.
Well, what, why do we need to have a say in what it looks like?
Yeah, well, you don't, you don't. You can say, hey, census, y'all put together your committee. Th- this is an opportunity for you guys, for us to make sure that we got good representation from all over the county. And I, I don't know that necessarily that the census folks are gonna care.
I don't know, somebody, anybody I've mentioned, too, they don't want just volunteer time.
Right.
Well, ain't as much of that as, I can get somebody to volunteer, but I just don't know how much time to tell them.
How about, how about you create a talking point, a list for us, and they made it out, that we can add to these kind of questions, where they have made the phone call, but no, that's exactly what I'm gonna get. How much time? What have I gotta do? How many times am I, you know, that kinda thing?
Yeah, I don't have, yeah.
Right. So, I mean.
Cause that's what I said, ask what exactly they're gonna be doing. I guess the time's the biggest thing, how much time's gonna be involved? If it's.
Understood.
Two days, it's not a problem, probably. Talking about over a period of a year?
I think.
It's, it's, it's actually about six months total.
Three or four days during the term of it. Okay.
I really think it's gonna end up being about four meetings, maybe five meetings of about thirty minutes to an hour apiece. And then they'll have homework where they are calling churches and saying, be sure and tell your congregation that there will be people coming through the community, asking questions about the census, and they need to respond. Calling, uh, other kinds of constituencies and saying, participate in it.
Are any municipalities, uh, given this opportunity?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. They'll have their own complete count committees. This is, this is for us.
Okay, I think I'm covered.
That's all you got.
Yeah, you know, that's what y'all always tell me, right? So.
All right.
Man, unless the library people wanna help me out with this, you know.
Hey, when was our last day on that census? You remember, last time they did it? Twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten, yes.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, it didn't get approved until well into twenty-twelve.
Yeah.
So what be redistricting before the next election?
Generally, I expect us to have done some sort of redistricting by twenty-twenty-two.
That's what I, I would think.
Hangouts for additional business.
That's all I have.
I'm usurping Mr. Gaines' role here. Motion to discuss the need for our executive session.
Personnel, potential litigation.
Bob makes a motion to discuss the need for executive session. Go have a second.
Second.
Jay seconds. All in favor? Any opposed?
Motion to go on the executive session, discuss litigation and personnel.